County Regional Board of Education was put to order. How to quit notice as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided on December seventeenth, twenty twenty four. By posting the notice with the respective clerks of the city of Lambeville, borough of Stockton, and township of West Hamwell. And advertised in the Hundredy County Democrat Time Newspaper.
I would like to fill the line in the United States of America. The Republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna begin by reviewing the election results that were certified on November fifth. By the Board of County Canvassers of Hundredy County, New Jersey. Uh, in the municipality of Lambeville City, there was three thousand five hundred sixty-three registered voters. There was a total of two thousand seven hundred thirteen ballots passed. Uh, elected to a three-year term was Martha Dennis with a number of votes, one thousand five hundred eighty-nine, and Brian Keys elected to a three-year term, one thousand six hundred fifty. Uh, unfortunately Martha couldn't be here tonight due to illness. The municipality of West Hamwell Township, there is two thousand five hundred forty-seven registered voters, one thousand nine hundred seventy-nine total ballots were cast. Candidate for three-year term Jennifer Bachelor was successful with nine hundred sixty-one votes. Um, so now at this time, I will ask Jennifer Bachelor and Brian Keys to stand and to take their oath of office. Have it in front of you. Wonderful. Right? If you guys could just read simultaneously from the paper, starting with I, and then state your name.
I, Jennifer Bachelor.
Do you solemn swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Sorry, well, I got off because I was sorry.
What's going on?
I know how to think just fair. I, Jennifer Bachelor, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear tribute and allegiance to the state. And to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people. I, Jennifer Bachelor, do solemnly swear or affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by the law. For the office of a member of the Board of Education. And that I am not qualified as a voter pursuant to NJ Revised Statute nineteen four dash four. Nor disqualified due to the suspension of a crime or offense listed in New Jersey statute eighteen A twelve dash four. And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
If you guys would just sign those. All right, Al Diroco, Martha Dennis. Dana Fashetti.
Yeah.
Kevin Gallagher.
Here.
Brian Keys.
Here.
Kevin Kowaleski. Michael Strauss.
Here.
Ronnie Todd Marino.
Here.
Anna Berry.
Here.
And Jennifer Bachelor.
Here.
I apologize. All right. All right, um, at this point, I would like to go move to the election of the president. I will call for nominations for the Office of Board President. No seconds necessary. At the close of nominations, I will take a roll call vote for each member asking to state your selection for Board President. If there is only one nomination, I would conduct a voice vote of yes, nays, or abstentions. Um, so at this time, I would like to open nominations.
I'd like to nominate things, Gallagher.
The other nominations. All right, then I will close nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
In votes. Any abstentions?
Yeah.
So, congratulations, Mr. Gallagher. I will hand off to Gallagher.
Uh, I thank you, and I am honored and humbled and bowing by. Your. It's this opportunity. And I thank you, and I can only promise one thing, and this will be the last one.
We get the vote on that, though.
Other people of Stockton will get the vote on this of effort, so, uh. Um, but I do thank you, and I agree. Uh, let's see. So now we, uh, we do need to elect a vice president, um, so I will pause. Um, Andrew did, I will call for nominations for the Board Vice President. No second is necessary at the close of nominations. The Board Secretary will take a roll call vote of each member asking to state their selection for Vice President. If there is only one nomination, then we will do a voice vote again. So with that, uh, I will open the nominations. Would somebody please nominate a vice president?
I'd like to nominate Ronnie Todd Marino.
Are there any other nominations for Vice President? Seeing none, I will close the nominations. And, um, so we'll have a voice vote. Uh, all in favor, Ronnie Todd, you're running the Vice President.
Aye.
Anyone vote? And then abstain. Congratulations on it. I have a tour to work in.
Well, definitely look forward to a good year. I think this is gonna be a very strong year.
Um, establishment, so we do have a few items, uh. To, uh, take care of, um, we do need to establish our board committees. We do have. Six, sixteen committees that we, uh, typically had here for a number of years. Um, so we do need to make a motion. And approve that those committees be carried over to the new chair. Um, I will say this, um, I'd appreciate if you have thoughts on committees that you'd like to be on. Um, or, you know, anything that you want to change, just let me know in the next couple of days. And we'll have some, you know, updated committee appointments for twenty twenty five. And typically, once, uh. We know who the committees are on, like typically we would meet for curriculum on this Wednesday, but we're not gonna do that in two days. So start like our committee around next Wednesday, probably that will be curriculum, and then from there to following week. Um, our meeting is a little later this month because we're off. Uh, for MLK, so it's not until January twenty seventh, so we have a little more time. So with that, uh, I need a motion to establish what board of debates.
So moved.
So moved by Aaron, and in a second, please.
Second.
Second by Jen, thank you. Uh, any discussion on that? Uh, if there's no discussion, this is a voice vote also in interest.
Did you, did you say that publicly, you know, thoughts on the committees or, well, personally?
If you have, if you have a committee, there is a committee that you would like to be on, just let me know that prior. I mean, you can let me know it publicly, either way.
But for now, we can, we can like discuss the structure.
That's why it's opened up now so that we can discuss before we make our, this is the time to discuss before we vote, so if there is discussion, let's have.
So I, I was, I know that we've talked, I know Gina and I have talked a little bit about, um. The Buildings, Grounds, Transportation, Finance, and Safety has a lot, and it usually has a lot of the agenda items and, and, um, being that our committees are only. For people, um, if there was any, I didn't know because I hadn't talked to anybody else about it, but there were any thoughts, anyone else sharing thoughts on. Looking into redistributing that in some way, that we're separating maybe finance or, I don't know, I just, that's always the one that. There's, you know, a lot, um, around that, and I don't, I don't know if it's because the buildings and grounds. Go hand in hand with finance, because you need the money for the building and the ground, is that kind of where it's at?
Well, that, so historically, um, pre-regionalization, in the first year or two of regionalization, we had a separate. Buildings and grounds committee and a budget and finance committee, so we did have that separate. Um, the board at that time, probably in twenty fifteen or so, decided. That it would be most efficient to combine because you do talk about the exact same, you were, there was a lot of redundancy. In buildings and grounds and in finding, because. Obviously, that's, you know, that's where the money is. Uh, there's a lot of redundancy when built with finance and with curriculum, because that's the other big area with the money is doing. But there's a lot more, you know, there's a lot more on curriculum too, so. You know, that's kind of why we left it the way it was. Um, I am open to. Discussing that, considering, you know, if, if this is, that was a board then, right? And that was the sense of the folks that were on the board at that time. But if it's the sense of folks now that we, that it would be better to split that into two committees. Um, I'm open to, uh, you know, I'm open to that. Whatever structure works the best, I'm just switching from my reading, my distance classes, because I like to be able to focus on people's places. Um, so, uh. Um, we don't have to decide that tonight. But you, you know, you're raising a point, and I know, I don't know that maybe everyone here has considered that. But if you have thoughts on that, let's, you know, folks, we can talk about it.
I mean, if the structural wise is fine, the other thought I had was, um. Is, is there, do we have to stay with committees? And I know you've been really good about like if somebody can't make it, you know, filling in the seat and that gets other people kind of. And I realized that from month to month, you probably wanna stick. So that people follow the topic through that covers multiple meetings, but I was just wondering if there was any way to, I don't know, like. Cycle through or rotate or have a chair, one chair maybe that gets another person into that meeting, I don't know, unless if everybody else is like. Really happy with the way that operates, I just thought.
So I'll just say, I'm, I'm sorry, Michael, would you say something?
So I actually, I see Jen's point, uh, as well with building and grounds, that it does take on the majority of our workload and when we're voting in. Large. Group, uh. That said, I, I, I do think that they do logically go together. Go together, uh, but. As I indicated before, I think really coming out of that meeting, um. That we do get. Communication a little bit more so that we can, we can figure it out. I, I, I direct Andrew Dons, I think, as we get everything and call him to make sure that, that. The agenda is in line, um, but. I do think logically they.
What if we did meeting notes?
That's, that's kind of what I'm saying.
Well.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And so historically, we always did, and those were supposed to be submitted, posted in advance of the meeting. I know that that has not always been done, and so it should be, we should restart that, make that a focus. Perhaps a board goal for twenty twenty-five to say, let's make sure that whoever the committee chair is, that they're putting out notes. And minutes until there is some plan, and that, that stuff is posted in the time of the law, and I know as of when I was a committee chair, I was sometimes. Challenged to post things the timely way because you got kids and work and life, all kinds of other stuff. But we can certainly make that a goal for this board. Because right now, we are doing, I'm sorry to interrupt him, but we are, we're doing it for. Uh, school and community curriculum. Um. And personnel. Right, we should be doing it for all of them, um, so that will be, that, that should be something that will be an emphasis for all of the committees. Uh, that's on me for not paying close attention to it, so I'll do a bit of job.
I think, if I may add.
Please.
President Gallagher. Um.
Jim.
I think that it would be helpful as well if there, if it's known at the time the. Minutes are submitted or the meeting minutes, like what is being put forth to be voted on, sort of being listed. I think we know usually in the committee, hopefully. Maybe we don't all the time because we, there might be like a follow-up thing that we need to add. Um. So I don't wanna make it too structured so that it becomes ridiculous, but I also like the idea of sort of being able to digest the notes related to that. Sure.
The, well, so some of the, I mean, obviously, um, it, when you're in the committee, and so. I'm just gonna jump back for a second to address something else, Jen, one of the things, philosophically, I believe that it's best when we have four people in the room for committee meetings. You know, or engaged or involved, and that is why I've always. Or reached out when I know there's a vacancy. And again, this is something that could fall on the committee chairs. So now it falls on us then too to say, oh, I'm not gonna make it to the meeting. Because it, you know, it's not great whenever. You go to a meeting and it's like, oh, there's two people here, and are the other people coming? No, I don't know, I haven't heard of it. So we, you know, letting, if you know you can't make it, letting the chairman, chairperson know and giving them enough lead time that they can then contact someone and say, hey, listen. Would you like to sit in? I am always willing to sit in on you. Um, but I also like to, I like other people to sit on on me because I want. Look, committees can change from year to year, and they should, and they probably will a little bit this year, because everybody needs to be exposed to everything that's going on. So, you know, I don't need to be on the curriculum committee in twenty twenty-five, I have been on the curriculum committee, it's fantastic, wonderful committee, but other people. Everybody should be on the policy committee at least once in their three-year term. Right? Because the policy committee is really one of the most important committees we have here as a board, we're supposed to be driven by policy. So, you know, um. Philosophically, I, I, that's something I believe that makes any sense. So, um. Well. Not just minutes, I mean, I mean. So, yeah, so we'll focus on minutes, um. Uh, there will be changes to committees, and that's why I ask, if you have preferences, if you say, you know what, I would love to be on building and grounds. Or I would love to be on school and community, or I, I really think that this would be a great place for me. Let me know, I cannot promise that everybody's gonna get on every community that they wanna be on, just, there's just not enough, you know, we have four people, there's somebody who's not gonna get what they want, but. Um, you know, uh, I wanna accommodate everybody and then. Do the rest of the weekend.
And I just wanted to say that, back to the concept of splitting up, Buildings, Grounds, Transportation, Finance, and Safety. I understand that there might be some redundancies, but I wonder. If, since there is so much heft to that committee's work. If having more people unders, from the board, understanding it at a committee level. Might really be beneficial to the board as a, as a whole. I know it might be, you know, a little bit more work and I, I, you know. I acknowledge that, but it, I don't know, I, I think.
If you're being redundant, at least if you have three people on one and three people who are not, yeah, then.
So you're maximizing the number of board members who are, who are engaging with this in committee.
Yeah, having one person in common, then could you, you know.
And again, I will say that when we did this in twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen, we made the switch. All of those people had been board members, some of them had been board members for quite a while, so this was a very experienced board. This is a newer board, a less experienced board. They're no less talented and are no less excited to work with all of these people. Um, so that might, you know, perhaps that, uh, is something that we should consider. Um, so I'm open to that. Um.
And, and then the other thing, um, with the meeting notes, I, I think that that is a great idea, um. And I. Right now, the, I, the ones that are done get posted on, uh, on, what is it called? Not on board docs, there's so many, I was about to say on course, it's not that, um. But there's no way of knowing when they're posted except to. Constantly go on and look, so, um.
Push note at first.
Yeah, for me, it would be, and I don't know how others feel, but it would be helpful if, if just there was like an email or something that said they're, they're posted, or I don't know, something like that, just so.
I think.
Everyone, and it's also then kind of like a reminder, oh, look at that, you know.
We, so, so what we used to do was that the, you know, with the agenda, these minutes would be posted before the agenda was sent out on Friday. So Thursday or Friday for the board meeting when the agenda goes live. So that way, when the agenda goes live, you know that you can go to Buildings and Grounds, you can click on the attachment as a board member, the public's not able to. Actually, the public isn't able to read the committee meetings.
They're actually able to, they're able to read all the committee meetings except personnel.
So they can, so, so as board member, you can go in and say, okay, here's the agenda, here's the minutes, and then you may have a question and say, well, this isn't really covered very well in the minutes. What's this all about that we're voting on? Um, but that will also clearly, you'll have the agenda, so you will know what you're voting on. Um, and so you can, and then you can, and there's an opportunity, it gives time for you to ask Andrew the questions, gives him an opportunity to prepare it. So.
And, you know, the only thing I would say to that is then it's just important that. We get it, right? Sometimes I know we'll get like minutes a day at a meeting, so. In order for you guys to be able to see them on the Friday, we gotta have them at least Thursday, so, and I can even remind you in my weekly on Thursday night. Week, you know, the week before a board meeting that, you know, don't forget the minutes are available for all the committees.
I almost think there should be a deadline, like a do or die, if there are no, if the minutes aren't submitted by a certain point, then what, what's the point? Like, just report out in the meeting. I, I don't know, but.
The difficulty is that finances, that's Thursday beforehand, and so that, that's a really.
I'm still jiggering up committee meeting times and invite, so.
But, I mean, it's, again, that's, it is.
I mean, typically, the way it's going is you take the minute, like, and I know curriculum, both, you literally take the minutes during the meeting. So like at the end of it, you're pretty much done, you may have to do a quick look over just to. But for the most part, if you do it during the meeting, then you're good, so you could even, if you wanted to, take them in board docs, you have access to be able to do that. So if you wanted to take them right on the agenda, it's in board docs, you could do that as well, really.
I'll take the best.
My man? No?
I'll take the word doc.
Exactly.
We'll get there.
I use it every week, so.
In any case, it's just, it is, so that's a commitment from the committee chairs to say, we are going to do this. We're going to submit minutes. A few days before, you know, by Wednesday or, or whatever, if the agendas are gonna be coming out on Friday.
I don't think they have to be as formalized, right? They could be notes from the minute meeting.
Simply be a couple of paragraphs that say, this is the date, this is who attended, and this is what, these are the things we talked about. Um, and I can share, and so, and, and, you know, obviously. Most if not all of you are gonna wind up being chairs of some, of one committee or another, so, uh. Um, I can share examples if you'd like from, from past ones, you can, you know, do it however you, there's no like standard.
Right.
Just knowing that it's gonna be out there, the public's gonna see it, so, uh.
Songs and top bureaucracy for bureaucracy, I'm good, I support it.
Um, so what I'd like to do, what I. What I'd like to do tonight is, we have a motion before us to vote on the six committees that we have, that we can make changes to those committees, and we can do that at any time in twenty twenty-five. So I would love to hear from people, you know, after this meeting, not just your committee assignment, but, you know, your thoughts on. You know, give you, I want to give you the opportunity to think about, to think about that, and let me know what you think. That sound okay?
Perfect, yeah, thank you.
And, um, are there any other discussion on, on the committee, on the committee establishment of committees? If not, then I believe the voice vote is still appropriate here, so, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone votes? Anyone abstain? Okay, um, we do have a couple of, I'm gonna switch back over to these. Sorry. We do have, um, we do have three items. Uh, of action to take, one is the accepting this, uh, New Jersey. Uh, school board code of ethics. Um, one is adopting all of our policies and bylaws, so the policies that are in place continue to be in place for the, for, for this year. Kind of strange that we have to do that on a yearly basis when our schools are on a fiscal basis of, you know. July thirty, or July first, or June thirty, or whatever it is, and then designating our, our media outlets, because that's where we have to publish our notices. Um, so. What we have done in the past. Is that we have this, everyone should have a copy of this code of ethics for school board members. And so what we've done in the past is we have gone around the room and, um, we have read. Items, the items A through J individually, so what we can do here tonight, if anyone is on board with that, is I will start and I'll read item A. Then I'll read item B, and we'll go around the table. Okay, and we'll just keep going around until they're all done. Um. So with that, uh, this is, uh, code of ethics for school board members. A school board member shall abide by the following code of ethics for school board members. Item A, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical proceedings.
Item B, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children. And will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
Item C. I will comply my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. And I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them.
D. I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-known.
E. I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education. And will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board. Item F, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain. Or for the gain of friends.
Item G, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow, fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its.
H. I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available. After consideration of the recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer.
I, I will support and protect school personnel in proper, proper performance of their duty.
J. I'll refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer and will act on complaints. At public meetings only after failure of an administrative station.
You're welcome, yeah. Amen. Um, under item B, so we do need a, we actually, we need a motion to approve items A, B, and C. Okay, uh, so I'm seeking that one. Seven, I'll move my mind, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brian, thank you very much. Um, any discussion on the code of ethics that we just read, or on the adoption of policies and bylaws? Or designating of our media outlets? That we gave Mr. Trent Collins. And Hunter County Democrat. Just so you're, I would say, just so you're aware, I saw that part too. So there was new, a new law that was just signed in by the governor. Um, specifically, and Jim, this will kill you, but. As of the beginning of January, there will no longer be print versions of Star Ledger, the Trenton Times, or the Hunter County Democrat. So it does provide the opportunity for notices to be posted electronic, we wrote them in.
Does that mean the electronic versions of those papers, or does it mean? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it has to go to the government's public.
It's not to go to the complication and they start.
So they, they, there's, they call it, it's legal advertising, so sort of things like, you know, statutes that require certain. Notices, government notices, you know, um, to be, to be advertised. It's just, I'm not doing it in print, it's one of the little six-point type. You know, the guy who worked for this type of, you know, and the guy who likes to read, it's like, sad. It's the law that we live in, nobody's buying newspaper technical.
And that law is. Law is only short-term, right now, so there, there will be an update.
Yeah. But there's, but, but I did hear that, but Trenton Times and Star Ledger aren't gonna have print editions anymore, but printed version's there. And so. Uh, I will say this on with regard to policies and bylaws, you can see there, there's nine thousand, we have nine. Ten sets of policies, ten, ten policy moving, okay? Um, so the three thousand and four thousand sets are very, very similar, one is for teaching staff, the other. Court staff, but if you were to look at those, you know, the policy three thousand one hundred and fifteen is almost identically word for word as three, as four thousand. Um, when I started on a school board. We didn't have Strauss F. Man, we didn't have electronic policy things, we had these big thick finders. And so, and as a board, what we committed to, and what a lot of boards committed to, what they used to recommend was that everybody read one section of policy every month. And we would, that's how we would review our policies. And then if somebody said, oh, there's pipe oak here, or this is something we should consider changing, that's how we would do that. I'm not saying that we have to do that, I am saying it's a great practice, especially if you're relatively new on the board, is a great way. Great exercise for you to become familiar with the policies and what they say. So I, every year, I encourage people, consider reading one section of policy. It doesn't take as long as you would think, well, some of it, but, some of them are really fast, some of them, there's only like a ten or twelve follow. Other ones are a little bit. But if you do that, you go through your entire policy cycle in a year. And then you can restart it again the next year, and that's how we. Um. Just something to throw out there for teachers to consider. Uh, any other discussion on, I know, A, B, and C? If not, you need a roll call for this separately. Can we do a voice vote? Okay, perfect. All right, uh, in, in that case, all in favor of items A, B, and C?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, with that, we come to the period of public comment. See, we have some public, and this is your opportunity to comment, you don't even have to stand up, and I just, you wanna, you, you don't even have to give your names, but we know who both of you is all, so. If you have something you'd like to say, if you want to do a PTO. You wanna, we, you don't even have to give your names, but we know who both of you is all, so, if you have something you'd like to say, if you wanna do a PTO update or anything like that. Um. Okay. Do we have any online comments?
We're not even televised, or.
Yeah, we are.
Oh, all right.
No, we don't have any. No people at all. Nope, okay. With that, I will close the period of public comment. And, uh, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Uh, so moved by Aaron. A second.
Second.
Second by Brian. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Didn't think so. Thank you everyone for coming out on a snowy January night.